Thank you all for coming tonight to learn a little bit about our upcoming budget vote and hear from the candidates running for seats on the library's board of trustees. Just so you know that this is being videotaped and will be on YouTube in a few days. And we're also thanks to our staff on Facebook Live as well. So, right now, we are live on Facebook. We appreciate you taking an interest in the library and spending time educating yourselves about the budget vote and the trustee election. I should introduce myself. I'm Scotch Zomack. I'm the executive director of the Albany Public Library. So, the budget in brief. The date to remember is Tuesday, May 16th. That's when you'll vote on the library's 2018 operating budget of $6.98 million. The budget is an increase of 1.5% over this year's tax levy for the average homeowner whose house is assessed at $150,000. That is an extra $3.49 on your tax bill next year. This budget lets us continue to support our branches at their current levels of service. And it enables us to respond to your request for more programming outreach and meeting room availability. I encourage you to pick up a packet which is in the back of the room. It's on the table with full details about the budget, tax implications, trustee candidates, and where to vote on May 16th. All that information can also be found on our website, www. albanypubliclibrary.org. Now, let's continue with the candidate form. The format is, I will ask each candidate a series of the same four questions. Everyone gets two minutes to answer each question. After the Q&amp;A, we'll adjourn to the formal part of the evening and invite the audience to mingle with the candidates to discuss library issues with them one-on-one. There are five candidates running for three trustee seats. Brenda Robinson, Arlene Way, Sarah Shearer, Dre Carter, and Jen Pitaro. So, are you guys ready? Okay, so we'll start. We'll start with Brenda. Please share with us some information about yourself and why you're running for the library board.
My name is Dr. Brenda Robinson. I'm born and raised here in the city of Albany. I am the Human Rights Commissioner for the city of Albany. I also am CEO of the Black Nurses Coalition. And for the past year, I have served on the APL Library Board, enjoyed it, and hope to serve again. I'm serving to have the opportunity to give back. The Albany Public Library is a hub and is very important to our communities, and I have a personal relationship with the library as well. I think advocacy, community engagement, and taking ownership is very important, and that's really why I'm here, to serve.
Okay. I agree with you, rocks. Then be here. People will say they have no idea how shy I am, because I just don't seem to be, but I really am, and this is hard for me. But anyway, my name is Arlene Way. I'm the executive director of Arbor Hill Development Corporation. I'm a native of New York City, but a citizen of Arbor Hill. I've been very active in Albany for a while, for a long, for a while. I came here to work with the New York State Education Department. I'm an educator. My background is in education and creating pipelines to educational and workforce development opportunity. I'm very much engaged in community development. I am running for the library board because I believe in its mission. I believe that the library, the public library, is one of the few places that is an equalizer for everybody in terms of having access to education and any kind of opportunity. It's a community gathering place. It presents venues for people to, you know, to tickle imagination, to have fun, to learn, to do serious things, and to engage with others. And so, that's why I want to be a part of it. Just so you know, and I won't hug the mic here, I am also a trustee with Upper Hudson Library System, and I'm a member of the Region's Advisory Council for libraries. I've been bitten by the library bug, and I would truly love to continue to serve.
Sarah?
Good evening, and thank you staff for hosting tonight. My name is Sarah Shearer, and I've been a resident of Albany for about 10 years now. I originally came down here for college, where I received my bachelor's from the university at Albany, and later my law degree from Albany Law School. As an attorney, I am employed by the New York State Assembly, and I also have a small private practice. We bought our home almost two years ago in the Helderberg neighborhood, and it's located closest to the box branch of the Albany Public Library. While I'm not working, I serve on the board of my neighborhood association as the vice chair, and I also attend Kena Meeting, the Council of Albany Neighborhood Association. I'm also the president of a local Albany not-for-profit organization. Being involved in my neighborhood association over the last two years has been an extremely rewarding experience for me. It's allowed me to both meet my neighbors and give back to the community in a meaningful way. Over the last couple of weeks, our neighborhood association has been able to sponsor National Little League here in Albany and help out Love Albany. I'm running for the library board for a few reasons. First, I believe that everybody should have access to publicly available information, and I would like to work on policies that continue to modernize the library's approach to do so. Secondly, the library puts on many programs which provide a tremendous amount of value to people, both individuals and the community as a whole, and I would like to see these programs both continue and expand through more partnerships with community organizations. Lastly, I would like to make sure that Albany residents are aware of all the great programming and resources provided by the Albany Public Library and explore whether there are ways to make resources more accessible to Albany residents. Thank you.
Dre?
Hello, everyone. My name is Dre Carter. I'm originally from Utica, New York, Cina College graduate, so I've been in Albany ever since I graduated. I currently work for the New York State of Health, the health plan marketplace, and prior to that, I worked for the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets with Pride of New York and Taste New York. See, as you may have seen, Taste New York prints all along the plaza. I helped organize that. So, that type of, that experience has given me a lot of opportunity to work on a grassroots level all throughout the state, helping our small business owners and individuals, small business owners that operate food businesses, and low-income individuals that need help finding information and access to healthcare through the state. Why I want to run for the board trustee's for the Albany Public Library, because I have a deep passion for making sure that everyone has access to knowledge and access to opportunity. I feel like our libraries throughout Albany are beacons for our communities, and I want to ensure that everyone has access to the resources and the robust programming through the library system.
Joe?
I feel like it's a little unfair having to go at the end of such an esteemed group of people. My name is Jenna Pitaro. I am an instructional designer at Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute and a librarian. I always kind of go back and forth as to whether you can call yourself a librarian without a library, and I think the answer is yes. I have a library degree from the University of Rhode Island and a bachelor's from SUNY New Ultras. I grew up in the area. My first library card was at William K. Stanford, so for those of you who know, that's Colony. But my current branch is Washington. I am a homeowner in the Hudson Park neighborhood, where I live with my husband and an almost two-year-old named Teddy, who is just super into the kitchen set on the second floor. So, why I decided to run? I was a public librarian in the Boston area at the peak of the recession, and I saw firsthand the need, when social services are cut, of public libraries for people. They become sort of Renaissance centers, business incubators, adult education centers. I have a background in educating adults, open educational resources, certification, website creation, and I've gotten tens of thousands of dollars in grant funding to help the libraries at the universities that I've worked at, share their message, and I think it's a skill that I could really translate well to the public library. And it sort of hurts my heart that I'm not in public libraries right now, especially what really inspired me to run was the threat to the Institute for Museum and Library Services in the current budget. I thought, I've got to do something. I've got to get back in public libraries, and I thought, maybe it's the time to try to put this skillset to use. I was named an emerging leader by the American Library Association. I'm a card-carrying member of ALA, and I think that where I could really add to the board is that I have an understanding of translating what librarians are thinking and what's happening on the floor of the library to a broader audience.
So, now we'll move to question two, and we'll start with Arlene. What are the most important issues facing Albany Public Library as we move into the future?
Money. Bottom line, money. We pride ourselves as running a lean machine. We provide a lot of assistance to the community. We see ourselves as being extremely responsive. If community comes to us with an idea, we want to try to meet that idea. But the reality is, is that it costs money to do that. And so, as with not-for-profits in general, we need to find a different paradigm for how we get the resources that we need. One of the things about Albany Public is that they don't complain very much about what, you know, about what it requires to get the job done. They just do it. It's a can-do organization. We need to change the conversation a little bit. We want to continue to be a can-do organization, but we really do need to have different way of looking at how we finance ourselves, how we fund ourselves. And so, money is everything. If we can't pay for staff, we can't, if we can't, if we can't pay for staffing, if we can't provide the staff with what they need, what they deserve in terms of healthcare and other kind of benefits, that's a problem. If we want to be able to continue to provide cutting-edge programming, that costs money. And if we want to continue to develop our staff and develop our programs, all these things cost money, and we ought not be shy about that conversation and looking at ways of how to foster, you know, strategies to get what we need so that we can not only sustain, but we want to pursue, you know, higher levels of excellence. Money is a root of problems for us. That's a major issue.
Thank you, Arlene. Sarah?
I would say there are a couple important issues to address as we move into the future. One is being able to meet the needs of the community within the library's operational budget, and the other, I believe, would be fighting the idea that libraries in general are going to be obsolete in the near future. First off, the library does a great job at running on a lean budget here. I think the board did a phenomenal job of refinancing the Branch Improvement Plan Loan, or the BIP loan, providing taxpayers an additional $200,000 a year in the annual operating budget, or a cumulative total of $4 million over the 20-year life of the loan. However, even with a proposed 1.5% tax levy this year, the library is still funding its operational budget, money from the reserve fund, and going forward, this is something the library will need to rectify. It's tough, though, whenever a tax increase is proposed, since the library budget is considerably smaller than the school or city budget. People don't always realize the increase for such the nominal amount that it is. Further, if you compare last year's budget to this year's, you'll see that the increase went to two places: salaries and healthcare. Both essential places that need funding, but unfortunately, not easily seen by residents who walk into the Albany Public Library. Secondly, having had the opportunity to speak with Albany residents about the library in the last couple of months, I've realized that people who don't currently use the library don't know all the wonderful programs and resources currently at the Albany Public Library. So, while the APL has done a great job at outreach, they have a bimonthly planning newsletter that goes out, programming newsletter, an email list, they're on social media, and any branch you walk in, you'll be greeted with flyers of upcoming programming. There's still a segment of the Albany population that doesn't know everything the library's offering. So, while I know the library is great at using polls and metrics to measure what's going on in the library, I'd like to explore if there's a way we can find out why the information isn't making it out of the library, and if we can rectify that.
Thank you, Sarah. Dre?
Most important issue facing Albany Public Library moving into the future is certainly funding. I'd like to be rectified by addressing some issues, I believe. One being, yes, the staffing is one of the most important costs that are involved with it. You can buy, you can renovate your buildings, you can buy books through bonds, but the funding that comes from the levy primarily goes toward healthcare and to funding the staff, and you want to maintain that you have a proper staff to be able to provide all these work services to our community. So, the more services you add, the more you want your community to get out of your library. You need to make sure you have a proper staffing in order to provide that. So, the issue that can be rectified is by promoting, broadcasting, building more outreach to the community, showing that all the value that is actually drawn from our library system. People are more comfortable with any increases that come in the future when they can equate the tangible asset from what they receive, from what they're paying for. So, I believe addressing the fact that, it's interesting, the fact that we have a stable system with our staffing, and we will be able to maintain these services, and we'll help provide the funding, the comfortability from the community to provide that funding with the tax increases.
Thank you, Dre. Jenna?
So, rather than repeating what everybody has said, because I completely agree, funding is our biggest issue, and you can't write grants for staffing libraries, and I think one of the biggest issues, well, there are some ways to niggling it, but some, one of the biggest issues is having our branches open at hours when people want to be at them. I know that the Arbor Hill branch often has mornings when they're not able to open because they don't have the staff to do it. So, we can have all of these wonderful programs and all of these wonderful resources, but if the library is not open for people to use it when they need it, we run into difficulty. And I think that there are ways to deal with this. We have a foundation that is really increasing its activity now. I think that using the foundation to both educate our community and raise funds is really important. I think the more that people understand that the library is not a place to get books that other people have read before, which I've heard, it's disturbing. Well, I don't want to read a dirty book. Seriously. But a social service organization. I know that when I was at the public library in the Boston area, I had people come to me at the reference desk who were applying for a job for the first time in 30 years because they had been laid off, and they had never used a computer before, and I had people raise the mouse like it was a remote control to try to enter the computer. Libraries are adult education. Libraries are business incubators, and I think that we can leverage our outreach resources to educate people about that while also finding ways to fund through them. I think we need to really revive our Friends Group. We have a robust Friends Group. Maybe we should have large book sales happening, you know, biannually. I think we can get creative and really solve some of these funding issues, and I think that also educating people about the nominalness of the tax levy is important as well.
Thank you, Jenna. Brenda?
I also agree with everyone here that funding certainly is an issue. Technology and increased diversity in our community is also an important issue. It takes a lot to offer the services that APL offers and the services that we, APL, want to offer. Scott and his staff, I believe, they do an excellent job masking the money issues that APL has, and I think oftentimes, people have the misconception that money is not needed when it really is. When I ran last year, one of the things that I mentioned was that Scott and his staff should toot their horn a little bit more than what they do, let people know just how hard it is that they work and how hard it is to provide these services with a particular budget that they have presently. Technology is constantly changing. I remember years ago, you never would think that the internet would be a necessity. It's not something extra, it's a necessity. A prime example of that as well, I walked, worked from home occasionally, and one time my internet went down, and I had to run, I live in Arbor Hill, so I had to run to the library to finish out my day, so it was very beneficial to me and it's also personal to me. So, again, I believe funding is an issue as well, and diversity. We have so many diverse people in our community, and they continue to come, so languages, needs, all type of things come into play, and it all revolves around funding and money. Thanks.
So, we'll move to question three, and Sarah will start it off. What skills would you bring to the board to help APL continue to achieve its goals and objectives?
Well, there are two main objectives, two main functions of a trustee. One is to set the policy for the library, and the other is to establish the budget. Due to both my education and experience, I have an extremely strong background in policy. My bachelor's degree is in political science, and my law degree is actually concentrated in governmental administration and regulation. I've worked in Congress, the New York State Senate, and I currently work in the New York State Assembly, where I assess existing policy, come up with policy ideas for the state, and build draft. In addition, I've been a part of multiple state task forces, where we were charged with going out to different areas of the state and engaging in a listening tour, and off of that, we wrote a report, and then off of that, we would draft legislation. Even though we would start a task force, thinking we knew what the problem was, we were always surprised with the points made by the public. This experience made me realize that you can't be isolated from the public and expect to draft good policies. You need to be able to listen to the people the policies will affect and get feedback on potential policies when necessary. While I pride myself on my current level of involvement with the community, I always look forward to meeting new people and gaining additional insight. In discussing the budget, I've served as an executive treasurer of an organization for two years with an annual operating budget of six, in six figures. While we were approached by groups and organizations asking for twice as much money as what we had to give, we were innovative in that we bought shared resources, and we were able to stretch our budget further and turn down less requests. Outside of being policy-minded, budget-oriented, and extremely good listener, I'm also a team player, have good attention to detail, and I'm a dedicated librarian learner.
Dre?
So, in my experience as an economic field specialist with New York State Department of Health, one of the examples that stick out of what kind of skills I could bring to the board, we had an exhibit at the state fair, in which we brought in not, not more than 90 local beverage and food companies, and I had a meager budget of just under $50,000 to make it work for 12 days at the fair. I'm not sure if any of you guys have been at the fair, but it's kind of like the Summer Olympics for carnival rides and cotton candy. So, the goal was to draw all the local New Yorkers and people visiting from outside the state, to bring them to this area, to enjoy the fruits and flavors that New York has to provide. With that small amount of budget, I was able to stretch that as best I could, which turned into just under $500,000 worth of revenue for all these companies. So, being able to take a portion of money and turning it into something that was extremely beneficial for everyone participating, that's kind of what this role, that's a part of what the role as a board trustee is, I think that applies. In my current role as Director of Outreach for New York State of Health, we also have to operate under a pretty tight budget, and I'm not sure if you guys have seen the news today, but we're not really heading in the best direction for that as well. But in that said, that said, one of my, one of the best things I bring to the table, quotes I always have, I always look for opportunities by leveraging your hardships to find events where they are at no cost or low cost. So, I want to make sure that our taxpayer dollars are spent efficiently, not frivolously, and in order to help benefit those people that need it the most. So, those type of skills, honing them in and applying them to the Albany community, I think, I think it would provide a great experience with that.
Dre?
So, I have a long history of translating library functions and needs to broader audiences. I've been doing it since I began my career as a librarian, almost a decade ago. And I also have, have really gained a lot of experience working at large universities and coalition building around the library. I haven't actually physically been in the library in quite a while, but I managed to find the librarians, see what their needs are, and convince others around them what those needs are, because often, it's not unique in the public library system that libraries are underfunded and overtaxed. Everybody uses them, everybody needs them. I have a history of fund acquisition through grant funding and a history of library advocacy. I was involved in the New England Library Association, the New York Library Association, and the American Library Association. My current position, as I said, is not located in the library, but I noticed that information literacy and instruction, which is helping people understand how and why to research and how to find truth, wasn't happening at all on the campus. And I reached out to faculty, librarians, the library director, and said, how can I help? And we recently received a $20,000 grant to develop an app to help students orient themselves to library resources and understand information literacy at RPI. I helped develop a free open-source badging system at SUNY Albany to try to fill a similar void and a similar need, to get the information out there and try to get people excited about how and why to use it. I am more nervous than I was on Monday. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm really good at library outreach and sort of trying to translate what the library is doing to gain excitement around it. I started a local TV segment when I was in Norwood, and you'll hear about that later.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm a national rep for the largest nurses' union in the United States, National Nurses United, and I have vast skills in contract negotiations and the union, and APL is unionized. I've been working for the Veteran Health Administration for over 23 years, the largest healthcare system in the United States as well, and I'm well-versed with policy and procedures, and I have created a few myself. I sit on the, for the past year, APL's policy committee and their personnel committee, and I do believe I've been an asset to that committee, and we have handled some union issues, and it just has been a pleasure working with everyone with that. I'm a team player. I'm a strong community advocate, and I also bring community engagement because it's very important.
Arlene?
Okay. My life's work has been about school, college, and community collaboration. What I would bring to the table is my experience in advocacy and educational and workforce development, program development, cross-sector collaboration. I'm engaged in a project right now that fosters collaboration between the business community, the colleges and universities in the area, and the school district. I have experience with legislative advocacy, policy development, fund development, and strategic planning. I think that these are skills that contribute to the work of the board. I'm also a team player. And I, did I say I was bitten by the library? I was bitten by the library. And so, I am having experience now on a different level, different levels, where I'm working with the library system, I'm here in the city of Albany, but I'm having exposure to regional libraries, and I'm also working with it on a state level. And what I'm, and what I'm learning and what I'm experiencing is helping me also to broaden and deepen the conversation that I bring back here to the city of Albany.
Thank you, Arlene. So, this is our fourth and final question. We'll start with Dre. Considering all of the services, programs, and locations provided by the Albany Public Library, please share your ideas about how the library should approach the question of funding library operations in the future.
One of the things that I find very useful, and it doesn't require a lot of funding from the library particularly, but leveraging our local partnerships, and that kind of ties in with what I was saying before, but making, ensuring that our community knows that they have a tangible asset coming from their library. I sat in, I went to the CD PHP cycle learning session last week, and I realized... I sat in, I went to the CD PHP cycle learning session last week, and I realized what Albany Public Library is doing already. It partnered with CD PHP to help provide potentially having bus stops once that comes to the area. You're giving people more bonus to what their library card allows them. It's not just DVDs, it's not just books, it's not, you're being able to be healthier, you have more opportunity to transport yourself around the city. We do this, in my experience with the Department of Health, I brought in a lot of new ideas of who we could partner with to reach those pockets in New York State that have the lowest, the highest uninsured rates. So the number I could throw to give to you, end of 2016, we had 3.4 million enrollees on the marketplace. That's probably the end of 2015, where we had 2.8. So taking that number, amount of money we have to do marketing and to do outreach, leveraging our partnerships to build strong relationships in the communities that we haven't reached, being able to extend that number, that's something we could easily do and definitely in Albany, to make sure that the funding that we have is appropriately used and everyone feels more comfortable with any type of funding increases.
Jenna?
No, I think you're completely right. I think coalition building around this community and around New York State is incredibly important for the Albany Public Library, and libraries are already really good at doing that. We share things by definition, and, you know, there already are, there's the Alberta system library system, there are systematic ways that we share resources in order to have databases for everybody, and I think that finding community partners is incredibly important, and we've been doing pop-up libraries and events, which I think is amazing. And I think also just sharing the value that libraries turn out for the money that they're given. For every $1 of aid that libraries get, you get $7 of services on average from a library. And so, sharing our story, and I also think that the investment that we made in the foundation will continue to prove very important as times get later. Libraries are the only, the only organization, one of the only organizations that in difficult times, recession times, get a boom, because people come to the library for their needs when they can't pay for videos, when they can't pay for books. And though our economy is doing very well right now, I think we're in a time of great anxiety, and I think the library is going to be feeling the effect of that. So communicating that to the people in our community to try to get them to rally around organizations like the library will become incredibly important.
Brendan?
Again, I would have to say that APL is doing an excellent job with the funds and the resources that they have at this particular time, but funding continues to be an ongoing issue. There is no one solution for the problem, and there's plenty of people fighting for the same pot of money, so it's very difficult. Continuing to be fiscally responsible with taxpayers' money is something that we have to continue to do, and I believe that we will, or APL will, continue to do. Continuing to think outside the box, such as the refinancing and the bonding, that was just so great, what APL has done, and it shows the creativity that APL does. I also believe revisiting and evaluating APL's assets on a regular basis. We have to make changes when changes is needed. Some things grow outdated. We have to really take a good look at the assets and services, those that are working, those that aren't, and we have to move forward with that. Of course, we always think about grants and outreach, community engagement, and also letting people know what we do, how we do it, and how hard we work under the restraints of funding as it is today. Thanks.
Thank you. Arlene?
I think this is an opportunity for us to become strategic in how we collaborate with others, and to look at our universe and see who else is there who could benefit from our services and how we might partner with them differently. We need to think about generating earned income. We're so used to doing everything for free, and not ever considering how we might be able to engage others who could benefit from what we have to offer and pay for the service, and allow us to still continue opportunities that would be free to communities, but if we had collaborations with business and industry, you know, maybe if we had different ways of partnering with the colleges and universities, there might be some ways of generating income that's not connected to grants, but earned revenue that we could use to help finance the rest of our work. We might look at how we share space. There may be opportunities, and I know we've been considering this, that we could find a partner who would like to share space with us and pay us rent. You know, these are things that we can play with, but we just have to think about how we do business a little bit differently and engage our community, our wider community, in a different kind of conversation.
Thank you, Arlene. Sarah?
I think the real question here is, how does the library continue to grow and accomplish its mission while keeping the taxpayers in mind? APL, again, has done a fantastic job of finding outside funding sources, such as both federal and state grants and refinancing the BIP loan. However, the operating budget is still relying on money coming from the reserve fund, so it's really important that the board finds a way to close the gap. First, I think we need to look at ways to increase revenue. The APL currently has two wonderful nonprofit groups, the Friends of the Library and the Foundation. I know the Foundation recently hired a part-time executive director, and they are anticipating an increase in revenue going forward. In addition, there are book donation bins at both the Washington and Delaware branches. And in my talks with Albany residents about the library, a lot of people aren't aware that they can donate their books and have it financially assist the Albany Public Library, so I think maybe we can get the word out about that program a little more. We could also possibly have annual book sales. I know the board is either in the process or just finished creating a five-year strategic, five-year facilities plan. This is a great way to be aware of costs which are coming down the road associated with building upkeep, so that the board can responsibly plan to spend money, and I think that will help in budgeting going forward. And lastly, and going back to what I started with, I'm interested in seeing more community groups and nonprofit organizations partner with APL. Whether groups give their time and talents through free programming, or they're willing to aid the Foundation in fundraising efforts, I think by showing the public that the library is made up of people in communities who care, it sends a strong message about the importance of libraries. Who better to explain the benefits of libraries and why we should support them financially than those utilizing and benefiting from them?
Thank you. So that adjourns the formal part of the forum. Now, we invite you to discuss your issues with the candidates, one-on-one. You have about 30 minutes to meet with the candidates. And once again, thank you for joining us tonight, and please remember to vote on May 16. Thank you. Go for it. [applause]